May I have a motion to adopt the agenda for October 13 regular meeting? Councilor Ross, Councilor Thompson on the table. So carried. May I have a motion to adopt the special meeting agenda of September 1, 2015, the special meeting to go in camera as presented?
Someone?
Councilor Thompson, have a second. Councilor Butler. All in favor? So carried. I have a motion to adopt the September 9 special meeting to go in camera minutes as presented. Councilor Thompson. Second. Councilor Crowe. All in favor?
Yes.
All in special.
I'd just like the minutes to reflect that I voted against this meeting, not just because of what was stated, but further that the city budget should be debated in an open public meeting. This was the meeting that led to the issues with the Ashland Management Plan.
So is that missing in the minutes?
Yeah, it wasn't recorded.
You did. Councilor Butler advised you of both the motions.
Councilor Butler.
The reason that was recorded is that I oppose the motion as it pertains to Section 91(c) and I'd like it to state and further because the city budget needs to be discussed in an open public meeting.
Other than that, all in favor? So carried. May I have a motion to adopt September 14 committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented? Councilor Butler. Councilor Thompson. All in favor? So carried. And now may I have a motion for the September 14 regular meeting minutes as presented?
Someone?
Second. Councilor Thompson. All in favor? So carried. Now move on to the reports that the Western Inquires. Subject matters or written reports of council have a motion that all the written reports of council be received. Councilor Thompson. Councilor Crowe, discussion. Councilor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It was interesting reading everyone's reports. I'm glad that you all had a good time at the UBCM. I just got a question for Councilor Ross and her report. She went to the Energy and Mining Meeting and in her report it stated, "Watch for energy and mining exploration in and about our community." Just wondering what that pertains to.
Well, um, thank you, Councilor Butler. Yes, um, it was, it's good to go to, sometimes it's great to go to those ministers' meetings that are sponsored by the minister and have all the industry representatives there because you hear what their plans really are. And their plans are to continue to explore opportunities for resource extractions throughout British Columbia, including LNG and other mining opportunities. And it seems that as far as they're concerned, it's business as usual, even though they've admitted that resource, the world price for most resources are at a historic low. They said that's not going to stop them. They still would like to continue to do exploratory exercises throughout the region to, for resource extraction. And it is a concern of mine, especially around LNG and other mining opportunities. As I've expressed previously, I'm also concerned about, uh, it seems to be no limit to the amount of clear cutting that the provincial government wants to do throughout BC and in our region. So I'm just saying, let's hope that, heads up, right? Let's pay attention to what the plans are as these things happen throughout our region because it doesn't affect the city.
Any other questions? All in favor of the question? So carried. We move on now to our report from councils, RDKB rep. Mr. Crowe.
Okay, on October 6, I attended a BDC meeting in Grand Forks. We reviewed the work list that Community Futures was working on for our behalf. And I apologize, I tried to get it loaded onto First Class, but unfortunately I didn't. So I'll have to talk to Daniel, I'll have to see what I get wrong. And a couple of things were discussed. The rural dividend, right? Which they announced up to 75 million for smaller communities. And their kind of criteria is building capacity, quality of life, expanded learning, their skill development opportunities, and trying to provide opportunities for rural youth to stay and/or return to rural communities and encouraging collaboration and partnerships with rural BC and First Nations. So we will be talking further about how that's going to roll out in Grand Forks. So I will post this part. The other main focus of that meeting was the BDC had agreed that there would be three major, not initiatives, but focus areas. And the first one was trails. People think that trails are for walking or hiking, or hiking or whatever. But we're looking at trying to implement a region-wide trail strategy with a region-wide trail master plan. And it would see under the economic development umbrella because it's not just the recreational part, like those trails. People spend big money in the open again to do cycling tours, that type of thing. So when John McLean, the CIO, made a visit along with, I believe, councillor, director Vicki G. and Margaret Rotvold from Midway, and they met with the RDO, so the regional district of, or RDO S, regional district of Canogans, because they're held up as a poster child of how to do this. There was some recommendations that came out of those meetings for us anyways. Now where am I? Okay. Hang on. Talk amongst yourselves. Oh, okay, there it is. Wrong place. They have an extensive regional trail program that's seen from the point of view of the RDO S and others as a success. Like I said, it's a pretty good poster child. The highlights of the program, it is a truly regional one in which all municipalities and electoral areas participate. They did a comprehensive trails master plan. It ended up costing them $50,000 and that was in 2011. And that included their extensive consultation, which is a foundation of the program. They have developed attractive and interactive GIS and mapping tools to allow the public to access information regarding trails. And the network develop are largely around connecting communities. So they use it not only for recreation, but for, as commuter. I guess for want of a better word. And they spend about $135,000 every year on the program. But the RDO S is quite a large area. There were some other things, like they have a regional service. Here it's less likely because the East End already spends $90,000. So it would be more of a boundary initiative. And a big part of it is conflict resolution. And they're looking at, and it usually goes back to the landowners with people on their land. It's also the interaction, negative or positive, between motorized, so the ATVs and the people that are walking and whether it should be paved. And then there's the horse people. So a lot of their work, even though it's a super success, still has to do with a lot of that dispute resolution. You can see it, it's one of the main points that's coming up. But we would like to see a master plan done, complete mapping, maybe even up to the point of there's an app for that, right? So that whatever you want to do in Grand Forks, do you want to, in Rock Creek, do you want to walk, do you want to do horseback riding? And I think it's going to be a huge success. And we're just kind of at the start of that. The other thing is we agreed we're going to revisit the agricultural plan. So we had a, or a few years back, BDC invested in a, an agricultural plan. It wasn't as complete as it should be and it's been a while. So they're looking at redoing that, that plan. Because again, our three top priorities for the area as a whole, boundary, is trails and agriculture and community forests, right? So we're not on, basically, on the part of the community forests, but the communities in the West Boundary are. And that's probably above it. I received a call from Allen Stanley to, which is the director, I don't know what his title is now, they keep moving around. He used to be the staff person for Solid Waste Management, but I think he's got other duties as well now. He might be the deputy something. But I haven't, didn't get a chance to get ahold of him today as we were in meetings. But he again wanted to know what we were doing, if we'd had any success in finding a site for downtown bins. And the fact that a new fire truck is here now. So they're looking at removing the bins, right? And then we can have the access to the fire truck and stuff. So I haven't talked to him, but I will tomorrow to see if there's anything new. I know the fire department is anxious to be able to access the lots and everything properly. So, and, and as for right now, I, we haven't been able to find a site that would actually fit into the plan for the taxpayers of Grand Forks to pay above what they pay for waste because we take it, take a lot more of it on ourselves. Is that's what?
Thank you, Councilor Crowe. May I have a motion to receive?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship. To you, Councilor Crowe. Does Area E sit at the BDC yet, or are they still not at the table?
Area E sits at the table. That's Vicki G., who used to be Billy Bear. It's Area C that is not part of the service, but Grace, or sorry, Director McGregor does fund stuff. So she attends the meetings, but she's not a full member anymore. They withdrew to pull back to do more tourism-related stuff on their own. So technically they're not in, but they are in on special projects.
Councilor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I believe, Councilor Crowe, you were away from the last meeting of council, the last regular meeting. So I didn't hear an update from the RDKB meeting. Did they have one this month? And I'm just wondering if you're able to attend that?
Yes, they did have one and I was not able to attend it. And had talked to the CIO before the meeting. And if there was nothing really pertinent to Grand Forks and if something came up as a late item, he was going to have it referred to the next meeting. Thank you.
Councilor Butler.
I'm just wondering if Councilor Ross is the alternate, if you're able to attend the meetings where Councilor Crowe isn't?
That is the way the system's supposed to work. We had a family medical emergency at, I think, 3 o'clock. And the meeting was at 6 o'clock at Trail. So that's why I missed that meeting.
Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and Councilor Crowe did contact me, you know, and, but I wasn't able to attend because I thought I was already engaged in something else. Just a question for Councilor Crowe. When I was in, at the UBCM, I went to a workshop called Making the Most of the Bound, of the Back Country. And at that workshop, a fellow named John Hawkins, who runs Trails BC was there. He was presenting on very much what you were talking about. But really what he said the focus seems to be right now is making the most of resource roads and about decommissioning or not decommissioning resource roads. And I know that's a huge concern for people in this community. And because there's 500, what is it? 500,000 kilometers of non-decommissioned, uh, resource roads in BC, which are adding quite substantially to early runoff, climate change, disrupting wildlife habitat, et cetera. So did you discuss about resource roads and what role they play?
No, we didn't. But we can include that at the next meeting to make sure that it's on the agenda. And I don't know if everybody, because I hadn't heard the term as much as, as resource road. So we're talking on decommissioned logging roads and access roads, that type of thing. But they would be part of a motorized trail system. Yeah, there he is.
So may I have a motion to receive the RDKB rep, Councilor Crowe's verbal report as received. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Ross. All in favor? So carried. Move on now to our recommendations from Stanford decisions. The first item is from our manager of development and engineering services on the subject matters of Alley Heights Development's application for strata conversion. If you're willing to elaborate on that. Do you have a report this weekend on that?
Further to when we discuss the committee of the whole this morning?
Yep.
If you'd like the manager to go through the reports for council?
Yeah. If you'd like to elaborate a bit on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an application for a strata conversion at 7330 Riverside Road. It is for the conversion of four apartments into commercial units. The applicant has gone through extensive renovations. They have provided the required documentation, including the Site 1 profile and all, everything that's required by the strata. The building is legally non-conforming as it was built prior to 1972. They've provided, the engineer for the developer has provided the rental vacation, vacation, I'm sorry. Vacancy. Vacancy. Life expectancy of the building and any increases in maintenance costs. We've contacted, just to step back a moment. The application was from 2013 and we have recently contacted a realtor and the vacancy rates at the moment are zero. So this was presented at committee of the whole this morning and we just want council to resolve to approve the strata conversion.
Councilor Crowe?
I would make that motion.
To approve the strata conversion of the building?
Yes.
Do I have a second, Councilor Butler? Any questions? Councilor Crowe?
Not questions, just a comment. I believe that Councilor Thompson may have said it earlier. But to take that building and create what is there now from what was there is pretty impressive. And that's the type of initiatives we need in this community. So I applaud the owner that did all that work.
Absolutely. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? So carried. We move on to the next item, which is again from the manager of development and engineering services. It's the subject matters of application for a development variance permit to request an increase in our ratio of apartments to the principal building from 30% to 50% to allow for current four apartments upstairs to remain and to comply with the zoning bylaw. And the recommendation, this council considers the development variance permit application and selects one of the presented options. All in favor of that?
I will, I'll make a motion to approve that. I'm not sure if that's the proper wording, but, where is it?
Page 10.
Yeah. Okay, now I'm at 26. Yay. Anything else want to make a motion?
Well, the motion you want to make is that council chooses, we accept the request and direct staff to proceed with the statute. It's necessary.
Oh, it's not on page 76 of mine. 70, that's okay. 70.
Do I have a second or no? Councilor Butler? If there are no questions on the meeting, all in favor? So carried.
Yeah. The other thing that was kind of discussed at the committee of the whole was the fact that maybe this should be downtown-wide. And basically rather than be limited to 30%, above a retail example, that 50% because then you can increase your housing, right, and densities. So I would like to have staff do up, I guess, a report to tell us what the pros and cons of it are. I see it as positives, but there, I know there's like parking, like the downside and stuff. So if we could get a recommendation that we could have a look at.
Councilor Ross?
Why is that critical?
Any other questions on that subject? All in favor of that motion? So carried. Okay, now. Again, to the manager of development and engineering services. Subject matter is the approval from council to permit Granby River Mining Company to enter into a mortgage or lease agreement with Community Futures Development Corporation in order to secure financial funding for plant upgrades at its operations in Grand Forks and approval for a city to enter into a non-disturbance agreement with Community Futures. May I just advise staff at the latest developments that I would recommend that we send this back to staff for more information? But we could have our manager of development and engineering elaborate a little bit on that if you were to.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've received a request from the Granby River Mining Company and Pacific Abrasives to, for them to enter into a mortgage lease agreement. Their one customer that they have in the United States has been concerned about the quality of the product that they've been providing over the past few years. So in order for Pacific Abrasives or Granby River Mining Company to provide a better product, they need to provide upgrades to their equipment. So they approached Community Futures to secure funding for this. And along with that, they would require a mortgage and lease agreement. We've had our legal counsel review the lease and they've come back to us with, I'll just go to that page. Sorry, just bear with me.
It's long.
I know. Okay, so originally they had submitted a law more to consent, which they were requesting that the city sign. And our legal counsel came back with a non-disturbance agreement that we would enter into with Community Futures. And that is for our protection, this is the protection of the lease.
Councilor Butler?
So I'm just curious, Mr. Mayor, you wanted us to send this back to staff for more information before proceeding?
Yes, I would recommend council refer it back to staff for more information at this point. And we'll address it at our next meeting on the 26th.
Yeah, I did, I did have some concerns about it as well. So I'll make that motion to, for it back to staff for more information and bring it forward at our next committee of the whole, our regular meeting.
Or our regular meeting, right?
Regular meeting.
So it gives staff more time to find out more of the details. Councilor Ross?
Just to be a bit...
Councilor Crowe?
Okay.
Question, boy.
A report of information I'm looking for is what more information specifically are we asking them to bring forward? It's just a little vague. So if we can just be really specific about what we're looking for. I think it is rather will be, this entire document. I've never heard of a non-disturbance agreement, so I've had to do a bit of research into it myself. So perhaps like what are the negative legal ramifications for the city? If this goes belly up, is that, can we be more specific so that, you know, they know where to fire their charts?
Refer to us, Neil, you'll explain.
Sure, so, so as we're entering, asking to amend the agreement right now at this time, based on the, the, you know, that while we have the document opened up, that we look at a few of the other initiatives in there. One of the holes in the agreement that we see is the establishing a process for remediation of the site 50 years from now. It's not very clear, but we're pulling material on basis. As for the annual extrication amount. So what we're looking at is, is how do we ensure that there is going to be a process for, for funding this in 50 years' time that doesn't leave a burden on the taxpayers at this point in time to say, and fund the remediation along the river's edge? Because we can imagine right now, if we look at that site and all of that material is gone, what is it going to look like? And what's, what the geotechnical concern is going to be? What are the biologist's concerns going to be? And how is the site going to look in 50 years? And how can we make sure that we pass along the legacy to the, to the community for the future to make sure there is a reserve fund set in place for that remediation? So as we do this right now, we know that every load is being taken away and we need to start, not only does the city need to continue on with this reserve fund, for this site reserve fund, but we also need to set up a joint reserve that is going to be held in trust by the city to make sure that, mind if there is proper money aside for the remediation of that massive undertaking. And what will happen, we're right now, it is a responsibility of the, the partner that we have. But what I would like to do is make sure that, that the council has made sure that there is proper investment in place to look after that. And the city would have the ability to do that. So that's what we're looking at. We're meeting with them later on this week and we want to talk to them about that and see how we can make that agreement look for the future.
So, is there any other questions or concerns?
I do. Yeah, this is a burning issue, especially coming back from the VCM and talking to a premier about this very pile here. Is there any way of, while we're, you know...
Is there any way of, while we're, you know, having some more second thought here, of engaging, re-engaging the premier and Minister Bennett in a discussion on where the province can play, play a role in, in this issue as well? We're talking 50 years down the track, looking at us having a contingency fund in place or a reserve fund in place for remediation, the restoration of this contaminated, it is a contaminated site, and there is, you know, and the, the province, the premier and Bennett did admit that there was some, there could be some avenue for us to get some funding because really, we're cleaning up a mess that was dumped there in early 1900s. So can we, this is, I think, an opportune time for us to thank the premier and Mr. Bennett for the time that they spent with us and following up and, and asking them as we move forward, what they can do to partner with us.
Exactly, so those two-week timelines will give us that, to do all these issues. So this is why I recommend that we refer it back at this point in time.
Okay, well, in my report, I did recommend that we write a letter to the premier and Mr. Bennett.
If the, to mayor the area is better to be prepared for all the ministers for the time that we spend with them and the follow-up with them, just to make sure that we engage back, even with the ministerial staff that we admit, from I U J, the folks from the Ministry of Land Forces in relation to the deer issue, so we do have follow-up correspondence going on.
Exactly. And the two-week timeline, it is not going to impact on anything at this point in time. You can ensure by the time everything is settled with Community Futures, we have that two-week wait on it. Counselor Croft?
As long as it doesn't include letters to the federal government, because two weeks is too long, just saying.
So all in favor of the question on the table?
We need a second.
We have a second.
Yeah.
Counselor Croft?
Yeah.
So all in favor of that motion to refer it back? So carried. Our next item is for the Manager of Operations, and the subject matter is the electric vehicle and charge and update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as laid out in the brief there, Tesla did change the program, so they shied away from giving municipalities the free charging stations. So we did have some dealings with Sun Country, and they had a family from Manitoba that really liked Grand Forks and wanted to donate an electric charging station to the city. So it was shipped last week, it should be here anytime. We are looking at putting it just outside City Hall in that pool. It's currently a handicap parking space, and we'll look at relocating that, that space by making that a electric car charging station. We looked at, or we're looking at highway signage and wayfinding signs, working with the visitor information center promoting the, the project, working with Sarah on some communications around getting the word out there on this, banners for the pool highlighting the station where it's going to be. We're planning on working with the chamber, trying to get as much business buy-in as we can with that. And we're also working on advertising on some, some of the websites for when you have locations where you can charge your electric car. And then we're also looking at adding two stations out of operational budget for 2016.
Do you have a quick question? Was it originally from Sun Country, we were getting three minutes, and I believe the other two were sort of a reneged on that part, are we getting them downstream from them still? Is that still on the table? Because originally, they had offered three.
So Sun Country was working with Tesla, and Tesla offered two Tesla charging station and then a, like a general charging station, but Tesla decided to change the program so that not the municipalities couldn't take part in that, make us benefit from, from the company. We still worked with Sun Country, and they did secure us this other free charging station.
But is there one still possible, that we could still get the other ones? Or is that off the table completely now?
For right now, unless Tesla changes the program again, it's off the table.
All right. So may I have a motion to approve amending the 2015 financial plan from the Equipment Replacement Fund to include the additional costs of up to $15,000 for the purchase of an electric vehicle? Counselor Croft? Second. Counselor Thompson? Any discussion in the meeting? Counselor Butler? And Counselor Croft?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This morning, we were talking about, I think it's called the carbon neutral reserve fund that we have for innovative projects of this nature, could the money come out of that fund?
Yes?
Yes, I'm good, sorry.
No need? Counselor Ross?
But are we deciding here at this, at this meeting that the funds are going to come out of that? It's a climate action fund, because I never envisaged that we would use climate action fund to buy a vehicle. And it's, I would find it a little disappointing that this Sun Highway was such a big deal, and Tesla was being all generous, and now they're reneging on their offers. Why, why is that happening? But we're still going ahead and purchasing a, what are we talking about purchasing? A Tesla, Tesla vehicle? Like, are there any other vehicles that we could purchase that, that are electric vehicles? Like, why are we supporting just Tesla when they haven't followed through on, on this, what was supposed to be this fabulous initiative? Like, to me, it's a little stinky, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable tonight approving the purchase of this vehicle and have it buy for an additional $15,000. I don't see where the hurry is.
Well, we could refer it back, but the, on my end of it, I will contact the other mayors from the Highland Coalition and see what their, what their program has held, because I believe a lot of them got a lot more charges than we did. And I'm just going to question that, why held it there, so has the program changed? I don't know, but I can get that information out of this.
Well, things have changed since you've VCM.
Yes. Counselor Thompson?
Through you to our Manager of Operations, is it a Tesla vehicle that you're looking to purchase, or is it another brand? Oh, the electric vehicle? Or is Tesla the only one that they?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not a Tesla car or vehicle, it's an electric vehicle. Originally, we had in the budget for an SUV. So we put out a request for quotations and for an electric vehicle, but due to our budgeting, you know, we were looking for a little bit more, and hopefully, it's not that much more, but we do have some provincial incentives that we're looking at. We're looking at, you know, putting on some, some graphics called Before You Dig, kind of getting the car ready for the fleet. So it's a bit of advertising too, but it's all, I guess, just so that we are sure we have enough to, to make sure that we get an electric vehicle. But there are Chevys, there are different models that, that we're going to pursue.
To our CEO and afterwards, I have another question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So originally, in the 2015 financial plan, in the capital plan, there was a purchase of a vehicle. During this process, we were talking with Tesla, Sun Country, and we were looking at the initiative with the electric highway. So as we're looking at our vehicle replacement, one of the things I said to the Manager of Operations, I said, before you start to bring forward the purchase of this SUV, which he was looking at just a general vehicle, we want to make sure that we were making, following council strategic objectives by continuing on with our climate action initiatives when council signed on to the Climate Action Report, went back in 20, the year 2000, and, I mean, municipalities have signed on to the Climate Action Report, agreeing to reduce our carbon footprint in, in, in Canada and in British Columbia. So we signed on to that, and as our agreement fell, we, we came to this point where we're at a crossroads as we have these electric car charging stations. So I recommended to the manager that they bring forward this decision, because council's approved the vehicle purchase in the financial plan, but now that we're undertaking an electric vehicle opportunity, we want to consider how that would work with our fleet and to reduce our carbon footprint, is again, with the just now, to make sure we're also walking the walk, so to speak, when it comes to our, our carbon neutrality. So that is the request for the additional funding in the budget. It is something that, there is not a hurry on this at this point in time. We are putting the charging stations in, as for the, the free one coming forward and setting up for our future, the future of our fleet to be electric, because we want to be able to modify and remove our gas pumps in the future to be able to have all electric vehicles on our fleet to reduce our overall footprint, and that will be an initiative that we'll be speaking with council about over the next few years. We recommend that we, we consider this option today, but if council so chooses that they don't want to make the purchase of this vehicle at this point, it is something that can be deferred until the 2016 financial plan.
The only concern is if you're looking at other optional vehicles, I know some of them don't have the capacity of, of a farrier old as compared to 120 kilometers or miles compared to 300. Would it be in the city's best interest then to wait, spend a little extra and get the long-range vehicle rather than the short range? Because, I mean, this is a commitment we're going to be tied into for, what, seven, six, seven, eight, nine years? So would it not be more feasible to go with the better one at this point in time? That's my only question.
Thank you. Yes, that's part of the pricing also. You can get range extenders, so it's a little gas motor that charges the batteries so that you can get 200 or 300 kilometers out of an electric car.
What does that affect our carbon footprint?
Again, so we want to talk about this from, the other thing that we're looking about with these car charging stations, can they be modified to have a solar component data to charge the batteries? So, so when we're built, when we're putting these things in place, are, do they have the ability to adapt to modern thinking when it comes to this? We know we're reducing our fossil fuel consumption, but are we, are we modifying them so they'll fit into utilizing our, our natural assets that we have here? And we do have an incredible amount of sunshine hours that we could leverage to charge these batteries for the future. So there is a change, there's a constant change in the technology. So, I mean, as far as it goes, it wouldn't hurt for us to consider deferring this off until 2016 and making a part of the 2016 financial plan, it's not, we're not in a position where, where, where council or staff are walking at this point.
Because on the same note, as technologies, as our CEO mentioned, advances, Chevrolet holds its own as vehicle, but again, they're going to be wanting to become more competitive with Tesla. So in 12 months from now, maybe not even as long as that, they might be way up there with the business factors if we hold off. Oh, sorry. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that we're not marrying two separate issues. That Tesla has backed off the donation, shall we say, of three charging stations is a separate issue to the issue of buying an electric vehicle. And my concern is that the, there's no confusion on the part of the public or on the part of the council that, that the two, the two issues are, are considered as one, because I don't believe that they are. I believe that the recommendation to increase the budget for the purchase of an electric vehicle, if it's not of an urgent nature, then I would support putting it into the, deferring it until the 2016 financial plan. But if it's needed as a replacement, then I would like to hear support from our management team on that one as well.
Can we implement that as far as our risk?
At this point right now, Mr. Mayor, to, to address the question whether we need at this point, it was part of the fleet replacement process at that day. The initiative of the electric car charging stations and the evolution of the electric highway, the initiative that the mayor's been working on with the Highway Coalition Task Force, I think it's important for us to, to recognize the elements of this, and I think that as this evolves, we've seen that Creston has theirs in now, Princeton has theirs in, the ability for people to move through our region with electric vehicles, if that's an important element that we're talking about. The separation of the purchase of the vehicle that Counselor Thompson addresses is, can it wait? And, and I believe that the, the answer to that is it can't wait until the 2016 financial plan, it'd just simply be a carry forward, moving forward, and it'll be represented as part of the budget process. So I, I agree that the technology's changing so much, and as we're speaking right now, the technology's changing, so I, I think that we could, we can get by with the...
And more so, once that highway is invented better by all communities starting to have that corridor in place, then there'll be a bigger demand for these electric vehicles, and as the demand goes up, so the price will go down. One question to our Manager of Operations, we initially approved the cost factor, I believe it was of 5,000, we put that station in, are we still on track with that?
We should be well under that now, because that was for the three stations, so we'll probably prepare for the other two, but we won't have the full cost.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or Counselor Butler?
That's okay, I'll just put forward the motion that we defer the extra cost for an electric vehicle to the 2016 budget.
May I have a second? Counselor Ross? Or is there any other questions or concerns? All in favor? So carried.
I just have one more question on this whole issue. Did Creston and Princeton get their charging stations through this program, or did they have to purchase?
No, they got it. I talked to Ron, failed it. And that's why we're still juggling, that we were getting ours at home, so...
Yeah. Why did they change their mind? Does it do help?
No, but I'll look into it. I'll try to find out what happened there, because I believe Princeton has theirs too.
Really?
Yep. And we're moving right along. Caramillas, Manfred Bauer contacted they have theirs. Okay, moving along to information items. First one being, a letter regarding common law and the city of Grand Forks over 40 years. May I have a motion to receive this for information? Counselor Ross? Counselor Thompson? All in favor? So carried. The next one is in regards to meeting minutes. Subject matter being the meeting minutes of June 23rd, August 5th, and September 15th and September 16th, held with the Transitional Housing Project Steering Day. May I have a motion to receive this for information? Counselor Thompson? Counselor Butler?
Question?
Counselor Butler?
I'm just wondering where the committee's at with deciding how many transitional housing units they think that will need in town.
Counselor Croft? Or Counselor Thompson? Or both?
Okay. No. No, we're actually looking at defining that very question of how many, and we're going through the steps of, very, of the number.
Plus, like, locations are still a question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, it's, or...
Counselor Croft?
Oh, can I talk about the Regional District of Okanagan's deer committee meeting?
When we get there?
When we get there. So all in favor of this? Any other question? So carried. Moving along to our Regional District of Okanagan, Suburban Committee. The subject matter is the deer committee meeting in Penticham on October 21st, and we have a motion to receive this for information and council to advise on the... and council to advise on attendance. Councilor Ross? Second, Councilor Thompson. We're now discussing.
Oh, yes, that somebody should be attending this. Do you wish to do so?
Councilor Carr?
I would first ask Councilor Hammitt. And then we can discuss it. I haven't looked at my calendar, but I could go to it if she can.
Do we have, like, you will be the alternative? Or does somebody else wish to be the?
I was going to make that as a motion. I'll second your exact motion.
All in favor?
Well, can we have a little discussion?
Sure. Go ahead. You know, you have a big one.
Just because it appears that there could be some precarious situations here with Councilor Hammitt and with Mr. -- Councilor Crogg. Maybe we need a third backup. So is there, I would just propose that we have a third person because I think it's really important. Because we don't know, right, Neil, what's going to happen with you.
No.
First is actually.
But I do, I am.
Free?
Going to be, no, I'm going to be heading out.
So you can't do a backup?
Can't.
Okay, well, there you go.
So we need a new backup.
Is that what you're saying? So Councilor Hammitt can't. Sorry, I just left up my calendar, and I can't.
So now we have Councilor Hammitt who needs a potential backup, so.
I'm not volunteering.
Okay, so.
But I just wanted to speak to it. There we go. Is this something that we could ask Mr. Smith if he'd be willing to attend? Or another member of the Deer Committee? Or does it need to be a council member?
I think it'd be appropriate to have a member of council there, first and foremost, just because of the nature of the decisions and the understanding just based on coming out of UDCM and the information about there, based on the minister's department's decisions, maybe someone the other communities are looking at. It wouldn't hurt for Mr. Smith to be a member of council, but I think it would be important for us to have a council representative present.
So Councilor Ross, you volunteering?
I would volunteer, but I'm going away to be with my children. I would just amend my motion, and I would nominate Councilor Butler. And in the event that she's unable to attend, I would therefore nominate Councilor Thompson. Okay, we're running out of options here. Mayor Conrad to attend the Deer Committee meeting and invite Mr. Smith to accompany you.
Yes.
Fortunately, I can't come in year and a half this point in time. I'll have to see if I can. But should there be no other options? Yes.
It could broaden.
Because I feel like Deer District, it's very imperative that we do help all the council members, because committees have their limitations.
I can consider it, but I can't give a definite answer tonight.
Okay, so I'd go ahead and amend my motion again. I think the third, yeah. I just, I move that we have our presentation on October 21st.
Which is what?
It's Wednesday. That's Wednesday. There's a 1:33 there. It's in the short of the meeting, so.
May I have a second to read that motion? Councilor Thompson, unless we have any discussion, all in favor of that motion? So carry. Our next item is the Sunshine Valley Women's Institute, and the subject matter is request to build a sidewalk along the road in front of Silver Kettle Village. And the recommendation is that council receive for information and council to determine if they wish to refer this to the 2016 budgeting process. May I have a motion to that? Councilor Ross, second. Councilor Butler, discussion. Councilor Crogg?
Yeah, just a note on it. They're referring back to attending a city council meeting in the fall of 2014. It was verbally agreed by city council to put this project into the next year's budget. And then later they say that, can, we want to remind you to include it and try and get it done before the end of 2015, but included in the upcoming budget for completion. I think there was a misunderstanding. Only that, that request did go through the budgeting process. Right? If it wasn't, when we say, we'll look at it when we're having the budget or we'll put it in, you know, we're doing strategic planning on some of that five-year financial plan. We're not saying we're actually doing it. Everybody wants it done.
They actually prefer it for many reasons at this point, but. Councilor Ross?
Yeah, I don't have my laptop with me, so I can't pull up the budget, and I can't pull up either. We did discuss, I remember specifically discussing the sidewalk. And we all, I think they must agree that it was really important. So I thought that we actually had it costed out because we had a specific discussion about how wide it would have, it needed to be, what it was going to be made out of. It needed to be wheelchair accessible or suitable for walkers or walker and a companion. Like, we had detailed discussion about that sidewalk and the dimensions and the drainage and having it widened up for a walker and a companion. So I'm just wondering what happened?
That's going to the budget.
It's going to the budget next year that we decide.
I thought it was in this year's budget.
I thought it was in this year's budget. Where I see it, I hope it's here.
Yes, that's up.
Could we just ask, like, continue with the meeting and then, then try and get more background in for it? Because, you know, I believe that it is, again, going to be discussed during.
I just recommend that this one should receive this for information.
Yeah, receive it for information. But we're working on it.
So the motion is to receive information. I believe we had a secondary. So all in favor of that motion?
Did we first the second?
Yeah. So, so carry. In regards to the next item is the Grand Forks ATV Club. And the subject matter is a letter of invitation to grand opening for the Blue Joint Recreation Site. And I'd like a motion for council to receive for information and council to note the open invitation for October 15th for anyone that wishes to attend. I believe it is open to the public who's got a quad. So may I have that motion to receive it? Councilor Crogg, Councilor Butler, unless we have any discussion, all in favor. So carry. The next one is Scott Davis, and it's a letter of concern regarding current asset management plan. And I would like a motion to receive it for information. Councilor Butler, second. Councilor Crogg, all in. This is a discussion.
I just see that Mr. Davis is in the room tonight, and I believe he'll have the ability to ask questions on his letter at the end of the meeting.
Yep. Absolutely. All in favor of that motion? So carry. Our next item is, subject matter, Alex Miller is requesting a non-binding letter of support for a potential television show based on a reality TV show for an eco-home building competition. And the motion I would like is to receive it for information and determine to provide a non-binding letter of support to Visland Media for the proposed tiny eco-home series to take place in the city of Grand Forks. Yes. Councilor Crogg, one second. Councilor Butler, now let's discuss.
It would be awesome if it comes to fruition. This is not binding us to anything, but to get the kind of exposure for tourism, for environmental concerns and community and highlighting community. So if we do get any further stuff, I think it would be good for us to try and be as accommodating as we possibly can as a community.
It could be the next home zone.
So.
Of course.
As part of this process, it's going to require us to amend the official community plan and our zoning bylaw. Once we've, we'll bring forward a report with some opportunities for properties in our town that would have to be, that would have to fit this type of construction. The sustainability elements associated with this, looking at this from a, from an eco-home perspective, we've always had some discussion around this. But ideally, it would be, how could we best utilize this in our community and provide for a zone that would fit this, this type of application? So it would require a community consultation as part of the process to amend the SCP and the zoning bylaw to allow for this type of zone. So that's something that council can look forward to seeing in the very near future.
Do we have any timelines on this? Let us just propose.
So right now, we're in the, in the discussions points, discussions with the, with the proponent. The timing of this will be now, once we have another binding letter of agreement, we'll get a sponsor to fund the show and to see that they have a platform that they could work off in the city of Grand Forks. The timing right now will just be a couple on them to see when they can get their sponsor. So let's allow the segment to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the question? So carry. Okay, moving on to our bylaw section. The manager of Building Inspections and Bylaw Services. Subject matter is the Amendment Bylaw Number 1957A3 to Municipal Ticketing and Information Bylaw of 1957. Do we have our?
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead, Councilor Butler.
I just didn't see Schedule 12. What was it called here? Schedule 12 attached to our notes. Can you just tell me which page it's on?
Which page? Where are you looking for?
Your first schedule.
There's, yeah, okay, there's, there's the schedule. Okay. Top of the.
Can you get that?
No, it's not here.
It's not included here, no? Final reading of the bylaw, final reading of it? Mr. Mayor, typically when the bylaws are given the first rereading, there should be a complete document there. So in this final piece, if we want to put this aside, we can bring it back in the next, next meeting council for the final review. It's already been discussed in committee the whole, and then the first rereading, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to see, to see and make sure that the final copy was in the correct form.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's been excluded from this, we'll find out from the manager why it's not there. We'll have it at the next meeting council.
So then the recommendation would be to refer this. Councilor Ross, second. Councilor Butler, all in favor to refer it? So carry. Our manager of operations. So we're always going to set aside, not that this is all transposed, but. I think you should set this one aside. Consider setting it aside, because then it goes a lot faster than it does. So matters to Water Regulation by law number 1973A1. And again, because all our councilors are now present, I would recommend we put this one aside and refer it back for our next meeting. Councilor Thompson, second. Councilor Crogg, all in favor?
One, just a question.
Go ahead.
I believe we first started dealing with this back in July, I think it was. And I'm wondering, did we rescind the previous bylaw before, at the same time that we introduced this? So I just want to make sure that we have the bylaw on the books at the moment and that it hasn't been rescinded.
Because it was back in July, we have to check this. Councilor Ross?
Just a point of information, I am not going to be present at the next meeting. So you're still not going to have a full council. So, you know, it just seems to be a little, we're going to just keep doing this.
What? I'm hearing voices.
Your voices.
So questions on the table, all in favor of referring it?
Can we just debate this a little bit more?
Sure.
Yeah.
So you have to defeat the motion then, or?
No.
No.
Now, just.
If we're referring to it, there is no debate.
Oh.
Yeah, it's true.
When did we refer, defer to the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Then from there, you might have to refer to another meeting if you're going to have all of council present, but it's not the worst thing that could happen.
Okay. It's not having to have, it's not going to impact anything.
No. So then may I have a motion to refer it to the November, what will be our next?
Well, October 26th.
Pardon?
October 26th, regular meeting?
Will you be present at that one? No, that's what this, that's what the problem is. So it would be November 2nd.
That would be, that would be, when are you going to be available? This is final adoption, isn't it? As long as it's finally adopted before the 33rd of December.
So.
The first meeting in November will call for it.
Councilor Ross?
Oh, well, then the second meeting in November, yeah.
What's it due to?
I don't know if council. It's the 9th, 16th, or the 23rd, right? November 23rd? Okay, so may I have a motion to refer this back to the November 23rd meeting? Councilor Crogg, Councilor Butler, all in favor of that motion? So carry. 23rd?
I don't have.
Here's a lot of it, right?
It is.
All right, moving on. Corporate services. Subject matter, council's consideration to approve existing bylaw number 1999 as the elections bylaw for the upcoming by-elections. And the recommendation would be to determine that bylaw number 1999, a bylaw to provide for determination of various procedures for the conduct of local government elections and other voting, is secondary as a bylaw to be utilized for the upcoming by-election. May I have a motion to that? Councilor Butler, I have a second. Councilor Thompson, do we have any discussion? Councilor Butler?
I'm just wondering at what point we're going to appoint the chief elections officer?
Mr. Mayor, once we've heard back from legal on whether there's going to be one or two seats being sought.
I'm just waiting for a court date to be set. Anytime you're ready.
So to the question on the table, all in favor? So carry. To our chief financial officer. Subject matter, 2016 permissive tax exemption by 2018. And the recommendation is that council gives the first three readings of bylaw 2018, 2016 permissive tax exemption. May I have a motion to that? Councilor Butler, second. Councilor Ross, debate, discussion. Councilor Ross?
Well, I'm in favor of supporting the elderly and childcare and places of, where people practice their faith. Often those are places where our great service is done to the community. I have, I'm sort of stumbling over a couple of these. And I'm just, I'm not seeing it. Although it's not a lot, the Grand Forks Masonic Lodge, I don't know why they really are able to get an exemption here. I'm a little bit struggling and seniors, women's auxiliary, hospital auxiliary, absolutely. Of course whispers of hope and bets, but I do struggle with the Masonic Building Society and I am having a little struggle with the Curling Club. It's a substantial amount of money and they both have, I look at their budgets and what they're spending their money on. They both have opportunity to rent out their facilities and earn more revenue. I see the Masonic Lodge put in a new floor in their kitchen or their lunchroom and their dining hall, which makes me think they have two. So, yeah, I don't know if I just need more clarification or more of a rationale as to why we are giving tax exemptions to those two organizations.
I believe, Councilor Thompson, you put forward on the last meeting, a request to see the financial papers on the Curling Club, I believe. Does that ever?
Yeah, it's all of us.
All of them? All of them? Okay.
Yeah, I, I was having the same concerns as Councilor Ross. I'm just wondering if staff could clarify for us why these two are falling under the tax exemption?
Our chief financial officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have always been status quo with most of tax exemptions, so we haven't really debated the merits of any of these. It's just been the same year after year.
Councilor Thompson?
Well, back in the day when the Curling, Curling Club was under the jurisdiction of the regional district of Coogan-Bowery, because the, the club could not afford their mortgage. And so, through meetings with the regional district, it was determined that they would purchase the building. And that in return, the city would grant permissive tax exemption. Now that's going back about 1985 or before. And so, I don't know if we'd be a little hard pressed. People at that time and the management are no longer with us. Mary Robinson and Walter Stayer were deceased. And I'm not just sure what, what impact that the Curling Club, that that would have on, on, on that agreement. The others. I, I don't want to be the Grinch that stole Christmas either, but we're struggling financially as a municipality to try and balance our budget. And it's not easy. And while all of these organizations provide good services to, to our municipality and to others, can we afford to continue to grant these exemptions? I think that's $30,000, that equates to what? That's 1% or 2% of our taxes. And, you know, maybe in terms of dollars and cents, it doesn't sound like much, but when you add, you know, about 2% and another 2% or whatever is going to be required, it, it gets to the point where we really are going to have to sit back and take a long, hard look at what, as a city, we want to ask our taxpayers to absorb.
So would you recommend a motion to study this further?
Well, I think we're getting a little hard pressed for time because I think there's, this has to be in place by the end of October, my memory is in correction. But I think at this late date, with these organizations having included probably in their budgets this permissive exemption, we might be a little bit hard pressed to renege on it for. I don't know, I, I, it's just. It's, it's just a really tough, tough decision. And the only one that I think might, might cause us some grief, if we renege on it, or more grief is done enough, then I mean the others would be the Curling Club. But the others. The others, I mean, they provide wonderful services. The seniors in the, in the city park, that was part of their original lease agreement, was that they were responsible for the taxes. They, they leased that up for the city. And there's, there's a lot of little nuances in, in all of these that.
Prevents.
You know, Phoenix Manor, Legion. I mean, I know that Legion is really hard pressed for, for funding and they're, they're really, really struggling.
They've lost their funding.
And they have. So it's, it's just, it's just a really tough, tough decision.
So seeing as the timelines are so tight for this year, council may obtain the possibility of leaving everyone on there and putting the Curling Club and others on notice for next year. And at that point, we will address it because the shift gears at this point, I think, is a little bit too late.
I agree.
So may I have a motion to give it the first three readings of the bylaw 2018, 2016 permissive tax exemption with, do we want to put a clause in that we?
No, I don't think we'll, we'll just give it.
The first three readings?
First three readings, and then we can.
Yeah. So do I have a second round of motion? Councilor Ross, discussion all in favor? So Carrie. To our chief financial officer again, and this is in regards to bylaw 2020 to establish Community Works Reserve Fund. And again, the motion, the recommendation is to give final reading to the Community Works Reserve Fund establishment by law 2020, 2015. May I have a motion to that? Councilor Thompson, you would have to say. Councilor Butler, any discussion? All in favor? So Carrie. We don't have any late items, so at this point, if you're going to have questions from the public and the media, may I just caution everyone that the subject matters must relate to this evening's meeting? Otherwise, council and myself will not address any questions outside of those chapters. So do I have any questions?
Yes, you do.
I'm in the second row.
My name's Scott Diggs.
Yes.
And it's pertaining to the asset management fund. And I'm concerned, as everybody is, I'm sure, as you all are. So I know you guys went over this this morning quite a bit, you answered a lot of questions that I had in my mind. But what I'd like to know is that you've reiterated that you want to eliminate three full-time positions in public works. And I'd like to know if in fact you do eliminate these positions, what are your plans for taking up the slack? When that slack is there, and it will be, in that, you know, these guys, they don't sit around and do nothing. They, they all have full schedules and obviously there's going to be a considerable decline in services to the public if these positions aren't addressed in one way or another. And I'd like to know what your plan is as to how you're going to deal with that.
I do have an answer for that, but I will pass it over to our CEO, Mr. Allen, in response to that because he makes more.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to address that question, one of the things that we have to make a decision on in the community, we talked about considerably today, was with the, with these changes coming forward, sooner or later, the, the city has to make some decisions around, how many more people do we hire to look after the depreciation, depreciating assets before we start replacing? The biggest, the biggest situation we're facing right now is actually, Roxanne, can I get you to bring up the, close this down for a second? And I can, I can address that question and the, can you go to the Excel sheet right here, the, the road to financial sustainability? But within that, I think this other one as well, the capital projects, right here, this one? So one of the things we look at right here, we, we have to have, we have all of these different projects that have to come up. We need funding to do these projects. So the 2016 capital projects and the, and the capital plan is, we need West Side Fire Protection Renewal, that's close to $1 million. We need Fifth Street Water Main replacement, that's $575,000. We have the UV disinfection, that's $500,000. The sledge, tubes just to pull the sledge out of the ponds that we're dealing with, that's $200,000. The Biomax reactor, the biomix reactor for the wastewater treatment plant, that's $1.2 million. We talked a little bit about the wastewater treatment plant, convert the lagoons into a parallel train, $1.4 million. We talked about 19th Street, and these are imminent projects that are upon the city right now. So we talked about this, we have over $10 million in renewal requests, so I just want to bring our attention to that. But can I close this one down and bring it back down to the, so we talked about that $10 million that we were. What's happening with our community is we're depreciating by 3.85 million dollars a year at 100% replacement costs. This one right here, our capital reserve fund, needs to have $32 million in, just to catch up from where we are right now. We have $46,000. So we talk about our financial position. We look at all of our reserves, and remember, if we're going to fund this to 100%, it's $3.85 million for one year. What we're dealing with right now is council's talking about a financial plan that funds it to 50%, and that would be $1.9 million. We have $2.5 million in total in our closing balances, $500,000 in picture control and rules and regulations, and there's some other things that we don't have full control over, but this equates to about 1.5 years of full asset renewal. So we only have enough money to look after 1.5 years. When we go back to our, our, our capital reserve fund, we look at this, our plan is to help us get caught up. Somewhere along the line, we have to make decisions as a community, how we're going to fund this stuff. You know, we can either simply just put taxes up, or we can do a balanced approach to this program. And this program is one that is a tough decision for council. Councils in 2011 made the decision that they want to do an asset management plan. They want to get their business house in order and they have to, they come to the balance of approach with managing costs and expenditures or by simply increasing revenues. That's, it's a simple solution, it's not any different than in your home, it's no different than anywhere else. And one of the tasks that we have before us is, we know we need $32 million, but we have $46,000.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not the question I asked. The question I asked is what do you plan to do to replace the labor that these gentlemen do in their positions? Who's going to pay for the contractors to come in and take up the slack? Casual labor? That's my question. Who's going to take up the slack?
Right now, at this point, Mr. Mayor, what we're doing is we're balancing our approach to this. So it's a balance of cost, provision of services to the community, it's balance of, of assets that we're going to acquire and own, and looking at how much we can actually afford. We can't afford to own everything that we own. We can see it right here in, in the financial analysis, that we don't have the ability to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, the, the answer to this question is simple, that we have to get the cart out from in front of the horse for a little while. Once we're actually in a position where we can handle our growth and we can fund the positions, then we can look at future growth and council would set policy around that. Talking to the community through, through, whether it's surveys and levels of service requests and what are the requirements? I mean, if we need to have potholes replaced in 24 hours, and our crews do a great job of that work. And, and the thing is, sometimes we're going to have to make decisions as a community, can we afford all of that service? Can we afford it? And there's going to be tough decisions related to this because our assets simply do not care. They are going to continue to deteriorate. The assets do not have.
I, I understand that. Okay, you've made that perfectly clear in your presentation that last film and in your presentations at council meetings. But you still haven't answered the question. And the question is, you're proposing to eliminate three full-time positions in public works?
Correcting, there's five, five full-time positions.
Well, you've told us about three, but you haven't told us who the other two are and they're supposedly on the inside. That's my next question. Okay, but you still haven't answered my question. And my question is simply, how are you going to fulfill the responsibility of the people that you're going to eliminate?
With a balanced approach.
I'm sorry?
With a balanced approach.
But you have no answer as to how you're actually going to do that?
If I was to explain that all right now, it would be in intricate details that would be beyond the scope of this meeting. I can tell you it's going to be with a balanced approach.
I, I think I'd like a better answer than that. I think we all deserve a better answer than that.
I'd be happy to.
I, I'd like to see the mathematics that you're basing your formula on.
Sure.
You're not answering the question.
I can be presented and then council can direct me to respond to that.
Okay, fine. Then my second question is this, you've elaborated that you're going to eliminate two full-time positions inside. You haven't said what positions those will be?
No. No, we have not, because we've been doing our succession planning inside and we're looking at the opportunities as they arise because of the management teams, the management individuals are under individual contracts that have the provision for us to speak to the managers to, to be able to, to talk about change, but we're talking about that change through attrition. So as those managerial opportunities come up, we would look at lending some of the jobs in our organization as we have. Because those are at UDCM, saw that there's a shameless approach to poaching managers in, in local governments in British Columbia where they actually had a card on every table, at the dinner table, looking for CAOs, looking for different positions out there. And those positions are very, very hard to find right now in British Columbia. And not only that, other management positions are very, very difficult to find. And our team is under constant pressure, Mr. Mayor, to, to keep our staff here. For us to believe that we're just simply going to backfill positions like this with qualified individuals is, is a, a, a plan that most communities don't have in place. We have a great process right now where we're training individuals to building from within our own community. And those positions are going to come up as the opportunities arise. If I have a manager of engineering gets an opportunity to get poached away, then I'll look at a new plan from internal, from an internal reorganization. If I, if a corporate communications person gets poached away, we'll find a new mechanism that we're going to utilize internally. If my manager of corporate services gets poached away, or my chief financial officer gets poached away, then we'll manage that as we do. We're in great shape as an organization to fill those positions and we've been preparing for this as part of the strategic direction of council in 2012 to 2014. And that's carried on into this process with the new council as well. So I'm going to say that we're, we're moving in the right direction as a community, we're actually in good shape and we have many opportunities that exist.
Well, sounds pretty complicated in the way that you're explaining it and I hope, I hope that you know what you're talking about. I really do. And I would ask council to take great consideration when you make your decisions. We've got a public works department that is second to none. We have services that the people of this city pay for, that we, we have an elderly population and apparently it's, it's going to continue to be that way. And these folks, they need their sidewalks shovelled, they need their potholes filled, okay, in a timely fashion. And I would really hate to see some rash decision making going on in here. And I'd like to ask that you all really give a great consideration before you move ahead with this. And as far as your Plan B goes, 13% increase in property taxes to everybody in this city over the next 20 years, that seems like, it's just astronomical and, and I don't understand how people are going to afford to do that.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I address that? Sure. A 13% tax, Roxanne, can you bring up?
You've stated that you're, the alternative to this first program that you're talking about is 13% increase.
So what happened here in the 2011 referendum, the community agreed to borrow $5.5 million. $5.5 million, that represents 4% of our infrastructure deficit. We talked about this is going to take 25 years just to pay off that one debt on the one, on the $5.5 million. And we just talked about, we have $10 million in things we need to address here. So a 12% tax increase, just to borrow a 12.7% tax increase for 25 years, that's if the interest rate stays at 4.65%, which is favorable for our community. If we lose that interest rate, it's going to go up, but our debt payments every year are $387,815. And that only addresses, Roxanne, can you please bring up the other Excel sheet? The other, the other Excel sheet, can we have here?
With the list.
With the list? That only addresses half of that. So we own all of this stuff that we have to replace and somewhere along the line, the community is going to have to make tough decisions and they, and they elect elected officials to make some of these tough decisions, but somewhere along the line, we're going to have to make some. to have to make some tough decisions, and, and, and it's not an enjoyable situation for the city. This, it took 100 years to get here. We've got to keep that in mind. It took 100 years for us to acquire all these assets, and we talked about people wanting new sidewalks, they want these new things, which is great, and they build a great community. And we never said that our, our, our staff is not great, and they don't provide excellent service. We just talk about how much can we really afford to provide out, and when it comes to this, and we talk about how much can we really afford when we have this looming loss imminently? And, and this is a challenge that we're all faced with. I mean, it's, you, you hear about this from, uh, every decision the council's making is financially, how is this going to fit into the plan, and how are we going to fit this overall into the overall budget? How can we minimize the impact? So there's, that was just the borrowing, and this plan actually eliminates the borrowing from that, and actually allows us to simply be self-funding, because if we go back to the other Excel sheet, Roxanne? If you go to the cap reserves, if we just simply didn't spend any money on this in 20, in 2020, we would have $12 million that we could put into asset renewal. Uh, in 10 years from now, we'd have $23 million, and we know we have to have $32 million. That's if we didn't do this. What's going to allow council to do is put $1 million into asset renewal, and about $700,000 into the reserves. A million dollars a year, when we're starting to deal with our $32 million backlog, and we're talking about funding this to 50%, only 50%. And that's going to be a position that's going to hold us into a, a, a more sustainable, uh, process with our, with our assets, and council's going to be making the decision on, do we put in a new sidewalk, don't we put in a new sidewalk? How widely we repave that road? These are the tough decisions that are going to be made, and they're going to impact everybody in the community in one way, shape, or form, whether it be positive or negative. But at the end of the day, we have to have a financial process in place. So I would just say that, you know, that a 12% tax increase is not, that is only related to the borrowing, 12.72%. That's if the interest rates stay at where they are. If they don't hold there, that is going to go up. And that's out of my control. That's when council makes that decision, and we move to that based on the referendum, once we borrow that money, we're obligated to pay it back. So this is to eliminate the need for borrowing and put us in a favorable financial position. This is if we didn't spend any money, but we know we have $10 million of imminent infrastructure that has to be replaced. I, I just, hopefully that helps the process, but I can't explain it all in, in one sitting of council today, because this has taken us since 2011. I came on in 2012, and we're working through this point right now, where we actually have a, a financial plan in place that is custom fit to our community to help us address our financial concerns moving forward.
Also, did we not also in that asset management plan cut back on services?
Yes.
Having said that, then, the gentleman has stated that the streets won't get plowed, the sidewalks won't get plowed.
This is what he's providing as a permission.
We are cutting back on certain essential services, so the job will still get done.
Do you want to see the finding?
Counselor Thompson?
To, to Scott, if his name?
Yes.
Yeah. Scott, you, you said that you were really happy with the work that our public works crew, the services they're providing.
Absolutely.
So is council. They are, um, they are great. And you're satisfied with the level of services that is being provided today?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarified.
Yeah.
Counselor Butler?
Since the asset management letter was on the agenda tonight, and asset management addresses the issues with cutting back on employees as we've been discussing, I see a lot of our employees are here in the audience tonight, and I would like to hear if they, they do have any comments on the situation. I, I would like to know what's going on with our employees.
Are we able to speak in the chamber?
It was on the agenda. As far as I'm concerned, asset management has to do with your situation, it's on the agenda.
And I absolutely agree with that. I think that you were...
Could you be able to identify yourself, and I will give you...
My name is Silky Lawrence. I'm the president of QP Local 4728, City of Maniforts. And the reason I ask is because last time we were here, it was fairly clear that no conversation was to be had with the union, so that's why I'm trying to put this caveat there before I ask any questions at all.
If it's going to concern union matters, then it's not part of the asset management discussion this evening. It's a union issue, and we will not discuss it.
The workers that work for the city are unionized, so I suppose that would be pretty much a union issue then.
It would cause a form of conflict. But I'll give you latitude if you, to a certain degree.
We, we came to experience the meeting and to, to show our solidarity and to be here. We are here for no other purpose than to witness.
At this time, I appreciate that. We will not get into the debate. Are there any other questions?
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
This is happening all over North America. I mean, you know, everybody knows that the infrastructures are, you know, in backstreets, and that most places are faced with these situations. Another concern that I have, and I don't know how quite to phrase it, so I'll just put it out there. And the reason I ask this question is because it is happening, I see it a lot in the States, and it's starting to happen in Canada. And is this a first step if you move forward with this proposal, the number one proposal of eliminating these positions, their union positions? And is this a first step in eliminating the union?
Eliminating what?
The union in our city.
I think that is a very derogatory question, because I don't think it holds anything to the relevance of what you're stating, because three positions are being eliminated, as you call it, which is not the word that's properly used. It does not mean the union is trying to squash. But I will have our CEO address that.
Mr. Mayor, that is, you know, I, I echo your comments on, in respect to that. That is absolutely, like, so far out of left field when it comes to the actual, the asset management plan. The asset management plan is the reality that you see before you in this community. You see the assets, and you see the, the reports, and you see the information. This is solely about the financial situation of the city. If it was, I mean, I would love to have nothing better than assets in great condition than not have to deal with this situation. My job is to make sure that I bring forward a responsible, balanced approach to dealing with this situation. And if you looked, if you saw the report and you saw the information this morning, it's very much a balanced process. If, if it needs to be tweaked, or a little bit left, or a little bit right, but it has nothing to do with removing our collective bargaining unit, there's never been a discussion, and I wouldn't anticipate it ever being a discussion with our council. Uh, we have a collective agreement that we've entered into. Uh, we, we're not a anti-union council, I've never, ever heard that. I've never even heard that even whispered. Uh, I would like to dispel that to make sure that there is no innuendos or rumors associated with that. That is not even open for discussion. So 100% conversation ended from my perspective. Now, if council says to me something different, that's their prerogative, but I have never, ever seen that in council strategic plan or any initiatives that that has ever been discussed. And I think that, I think council will probably echo that comment tonight from everything that we've talked about.
Absolutely, and, and that is a case where you're overlapping a union issue into an asset management program, which does not only affect the workers, there are many other options on that asset management program. So we're not dealing only with labor.
I understand that. Yep.
That's your point.
Good knowledge. Thank you.
To the gentleman in the back.
As I was listening to the discussion here, asset management, and the belt tightening, and fiscal responsibility, and in the middle of that, there's buying an electric car. First it was a Tesla, wow, that's pretty amazing, because they're pretty expensive. Um, and I guess it's not going to be a Tesla, but I'm just curious how you can explain how that dovetails with asset management, buying an electric car. Is that a promotional aspect for the electric road, or is there something, some other good reason? Is it going to replace the existing vehicle? I just, I'm just thinking that people at home watching this, and people in the gallery would go, okay, so electric cars are pretty pricey still, so how's that work?
Where's CEO?
So, Mr. Mayor, the, one of the comments has been, uh, council's looked at a triple bottom line when it comes to the, uh, asset replacements, socioeconomic and environmental components of that. So every decision that council's making has, considers all three of those, those pillars. Uh, we talked about the reduction of carbon fuel, uh, we talked about that financial impact on the future, because we're passing this baton with asset management into the future. It doesn't stop today. It's a long-term marathon that never ends, and just the same as the carbon footprint that we leave, it's the future, uh, to the future generations that, uh, that are going to occupy the communities, uh, in this community in particular. Uh, the, the electric vehicle piece, absolutely, we want to look at this, but we need vehicles to move our employees around in our community, and as we do that, we have to weigh out the, the carbon footprint associated with that. So we're going to be looking at the triple bottom line with this. So, uh, the ability for us to hold, uh, import fossil fuels into our community is part of the consideration. So we have to have fuel trucks coming into our community, they also burn fuel, then they deposit their fuels, our tanks then deteriorate, and we have to replace those vehicles. We look at this from a, a electrical, uh, solar power and capacity, um, there's all kinds of varying possibilities around this, and hopefully we can move towards even more sustainable practices in the future, but this is the next evolution that's upon us from a community's perspective, to reduce that. So financially speaking, there is a, there is a financial burden that is borne on that right now, and we're talking about that. That's why council's made the recommendation to defer it into the 2016 year, to hopefully see a, uh, cost reduction. But we know a, uh, one of our V8 pickups or V6 pickups is going to burn a lot of fossil fuels right now, and we want to reduce that as part of the community's commitment to reducing our carbon footprint.
So, yeah.
Just an add-on to this?
Okay.
We, we, if we're just moving people around our community, we really don't need a range extender option, do we? Like, we're not maybe driving a Castlecar or Rock Creek or something.
Why not?
He, he said, moving her, moving people around the community, that's, that's all I was pointing out.
We want to become energy conscious. We have to look at the long range. This is why we're referring it to 2016. And we have to start somewhere, because if we keep putting it off, our carbon footprint is not even going to be visible.
I, I meant the range extender option, not extend. Not moving this to a decision.
No, 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 I understand what you meant. But if we get a vehicle that's got a short distance factor, why would we want to invest in something like that? We have to look at all the options at this point. Carrie? And I know what it seems like compared to the asset management, but we have to start somewhere. Counselor Croft?
Okay, I had the, uh, a similar thought while we were discussing with, but are the people out there thinking that because we're getting a charging station, that we're just going to run out and buy a car? Just to have an electric car? Um, and, and it's not the latest purchase, it's the first one. It's the first of electric vehicles, and last they come up with some Star Trek stuff, and we'll be switching to that. But, um, eventually, you're going to see that most municipalities will have electric vehicles. Probably, probably most of the world will have straight electric vehicles until something better comes along.
They already do in a lot of municipalities. They do. And the key concept here is, we want to be part of this electric corridor. We want to be as innovative as all the other municipalities are already, like Caramia's, Christina Lake has a charging station. If we don't become part of this network, then we'll be the only ones that are not visible on the map, so to speak. And I think it's a great innovation program for us to be part of this, because having been on the highways coalition with them and experienced this, it's a great concept. And eventually, it will drive the cost of vehicles down, because there'll be more demand for them.